Oh, yes, sir, please.
People don't know how to drive. That's what the problem is.
It's the first real slippery night apparently.
It's not even slippery.
I know, but it's cold.
Somebody saw, somebody saw a snowflake and they thought, oh, my god.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the November thirteenth, twenty seventeen, meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. Um, the board is just coming out of a paperwork review. And I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, on the consent agenda for tonight, we have the following items. The minutes of the October twenty-third meeting, accounts payable manifest, uh, November seventh, forty-six thousand, three oh one forty-seven. November fourteenth of one million, one hundred thirty thousand, three eighty-three oh eight, which I assume is the school district payment.
Yes.
Uh, payroll manifest of, of November ninth, fifty-four thousand, four oh eight sixty-seven. And November sixteenth of fifty-one thousand, five seventy-one forty-three. We have a timbered tax levy of five hundred ninety dollars and thirty cents. And we have the treasury reconciliation for September. Are there any items in the consent agenda members would like to have removed for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perry?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries five zero zero. Nice to hear that, five zero zero.
You like that?
Uh, are there any other items that members would like to have discussed or placed on the agenda for this meeting? Okay, public input will occur no earlier than six fifteen P M. tonight. Okay, on to the first item of business, the twenty-eighteenth health insurance plan, uh, the proposal to change to health trust. Mr. Brown?
Okay. So as, uh, we previously had discussed with the board, uh, the current healthcare provider, um, interlocal trust. Over the past couple of years, we've, um, as you know, we made a transition from a July-June, um, enrollment period to calendar year. So during that transition, we saw a five percent increase in our rates. And then when we get back on the calendar year, um, last year, we saw a twenty-two percent increase. And then this year for two thousand eighteen, um, another rate increase of seventeen point three nine percent. So the board asked me to, to look into, um, some other rates at another provider. We went to health trust, um, worked with the union, um, met with those officials, came up, identified a couple comparable plans. Uh, the union met and has agreed, um, that these plans are comparable and, um, really, to be honest with you, um, stepped up and, and, uh, you know, agreed to do this because one of the, the big changes would be the, um, the, the amount of copayments, uh, that will change. So we have two plans, a point of service and, uh, an HMO. We're not able to match, uh, our current plan has a five dollar copay. The, uh, point of service with health trust is they only offer a twenty dollar copay. And with the HMO, a ten dollar copay. So, and there's some other changes too. Um, but because the town pays eighty percent of the premium costs and employees contribute twenty percent, um, it looked like this was a really good, uh, win-win situation for, uh, our employees, the union employees, and for the town to make this change. So we also had an informational meeting. We did have some retirees attend. And they were going to be looking at, um, a, a large increase as well, staying with interlocal. Um, unfortunately, the health trust plan, uh, is, has, is cost more per month as well. Um, so there, the retirees are going to see a significant increase, um, in their monthly premium costs. I just wanted to point that out to the board. I know that some of the retirees may have, um, reached out to you folks and asked if there was anything we could do. And I can tell you that the health trust did an evaluation of the current plan. You know, what we're talking about is our, uh, medic, medic comp plan. Um, and a lot of the out-of-pocket expenses will go away under the health trust, so that is one reason why the health trust is a little bit more expensive. Um, but anyhow, if, if the board, um, through this transition, if you wanted to consider, um, offering a little, uh, subsidy to help transition the retirees onto the newer plan, um, then, then we can work with the health trust. They actually have a system in their billing system where they can take care of that. And they've told me that they're, they have, it doesn't happen often, but there are times when there's union contracts, uh, where there are some subsidies that are offered. So the board, that is something the board could consider doing. Um, I threw out, uh, an example of, you know, the first year, you could do like a three-year thing, um, where, you know, we offer, uh, an incentive in year one. We reduce that incentive in year two, and then it's fully, um, supported in year three. The employees are not obligated to take our, our plan. They can go out and, and get a, a plan from any insurance provider. So it's just something that we offer our retirees. The prices change every year. Um, it's, you know, it's kind of the nature of the beast with health insurance. So for getting back to our budget, when we, uh, we make these changes, we haven't done our, um, open enrollment yet, and I'm hearing rumors of some people making some changes. Um, so, you know, the, the number can change up or down based on enrollment. But we're looking at, um, being able to remove about seventy-five thousand dollars from the operating, but the proposed operating budget by transitioning to this plan.
Troy, will they still be able to do the FSA's, the saving plans?
Yep, they can still do the flexible spending account.
What about the retirees? Can the retirees participate in that?
I don't think they, they don't participate.
Okay.
I don't know that they can, Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, wasn't sure how it worked. I know.
A retiree couldn't do that. I think it's got to be an active employee.
Active employee.
It's got to be income.
Yeah.
Well, they do get an income, right, out of their retirement?
Yeah, but it's, I don't, yeah. Well, for tax purposes, it's considered income. I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
Are there any questions, um, or comments? Uh, I, to be honest with you and, and shame on me, I guess, I didn't realize that a couple of our retirees are, um, taking health insurance with us, and I, I was unaware of that.
And as you see, some of them, um, depending on when they graduated, some actually receive a subsidy from New Hampshire State Retirement. Um, so a single person can receive two hundred and thirty-six dollars a month. Um, and then a two-person is a s- four hundred and seventy-three dollars per month.
Comments, questions from members of the board? I can't bring up that spreadsheet.
Just hea- the health insurance.
Yep.
It should be.
Clicked it in.
That computer doesn't like that site.
Yeah.
It's blank, yeah.
It should have just opened up right in the.
It, yeah.
It's part of the explanation of health insurance.
So was the seventy-five thousand dollar savings included the subsidy? Or was that?
No, that was.
So the subsidy would be?
Right. No.
Be about sixty-nine thousand dollar savings.
Yeah, and, and I gave an example here, you know, of some numbers, but those, the number, it can be, you know, it, it doesn't, one, you don't have to offer a subsidy. Two, I think even if you gave a small amount, it would be appreciated. Three, I think it's, it's a practice that I'm concerned about, um, that if we start establishing, rates are always going to go up.
Right.
And, you know, once we start going down that path of trying to assist with, um, you know, reducing that impact, financial impact, then, you know, there could be, uh, an expectation that the board's going to continue that practice. It's, I, I just wanted, you know, we had, when we had our informational meeting, we had probably, I think, six, seven retirees that came here to the meeting, so.
So with this change, the town saves seventy-five thousand dollars. In the weekly paycheck, what's the average employee going to gain or lose?
The average employee? Um, I think they're, they're going to be saving on a weekly basis, somewhere around thirty dollars on a weekly basis, the family plan.
On a family plan.
Yeah.
So the numbers that you have listed here, when you say total, is that the total for the year or per month? On, next to the retirees?
Um, so down at the bottom, the, the, the second? Total annual cost? So that would be the annual cost of the town, um, if we offered that subsidy.
The only sheet we see is the retiring one. We don't see the town one.
Right, and I think what Steve was saying, the cost to the retirees, is that a monthly cost or?
So the top, the top spr- the top?
Yeah.
That's the monthly cost.
Eighteen.
Yeah.
So we're offering them basically ten dollars a month?
Yeah.
Less than ten dollars a month to subsidize it by giving them a hundred dollars per year?
No, that's per month.
So then our annual cost?
That's your question. If I, if I was saying that
Yeah, six thousand dollars.
Two thousand and eighteen, you could offer a one hundred dollar subsidy?
Per year.
Per, per month.
Then it's not.
Or you could offer fifty dollars per month.
So you're saying the average, so what's the average two-person plan? Going to save as a current employee?
It's, it's kind of almost about the same.
About thirty bucks.
Yeah.
So it's a hundred.
A, a week, but that's, that is a week.
Right, so it's about a hundred and twenty bucks a month.
Yeah.
So six thousand times twelve months is really what we're looking at?
No, it's six thousand is the total for, for the twelve months. It's five hundred dollars a month. Five hundred dollars a month for those employees, or for those retirees.
Oh, okay, I get it. Yeah, yeah, alright.
So it's six thousand dollars to the year. And the regular employees, the current employed ones are going to save somewhere around thirty dollars a week.
Yeah.
So.
They're going to have higher.
They're going to save a hundred and twenty bucks a month.
Yeah, and, but they're going to have, you know, depending on their usage.
Correct.
They're going to a higher, um,
But they can.
Copay, and they're going to have a higher cost for, uh, prescription.
They can compensate that with the FSA. Because that's a pre-tax, there's a pre-tax statements for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, okay.
Questions or comments or suggestions from the board members?
I could go with the subsidy for two thousand and eighteen, but I don't know that I would give a subsidy for nineteen.
Yeah, just do the first year, help offset it, and then.
Yeah, because they didn't know.
Right.
I could, I could.
It's, you know, and that, that was their biggest, it's like, you know, but, you know, everyone gets hit with this, but, um, they're obviously on a fixed income. Um, some of these retired employees don't receive the, the New Hampshire State Retirement subsidy. It's a big jump.
Only one doesn't, though.
Yeah.
Well, no.
Only one doesn't.
Only, yeah.
Only one doesn't receive a state retirement subsidy.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm inclined to be with Steve. I think the first year makes sense, right, because we're making a change sort of mid-plan and.
I, I, I would agree with that. One year, uh, without prejudice because of the fact that we changed it so late. I, and we could accommodate it with the savings that we affect by doing that change.
So it's only going to cost us six thousand dollars?
For the, for the next twelve months, yeah.
But it's saving is seventy-five, so.
Yeah, no, no, I get it. I just want to make sure that.
Sixty-nine, right. Save the sixty-nine and then we pay off the Friday.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
I'll entertain a motion.
So what are we saying, that we'll give the six thousand dollar subsidy?
A hundred dollars a month.
A hundred dollars a month to the retirees?
To those listed on the.
I make a motion that we give a hundred dollar subsidy per month to the listed retired employees here, which there are five, for a total of six thousand dollars a year. Second?
Most made by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brunel, to offer a hundred dollar a month subsidy to the five retirees.
To clarify, I didn't.
For what year own, for one year own?
I did not mean per year, I meant for the year.
For the year.
For two thousand.
For twenty eighteen. For twenty, service year is twenty eighteen.
For twenty eighteen. Deb, do you have that?
Hmm?
Discussion from? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries five zero zero. And hopefully this helps our retirees a little. Um, to accommodate them with the, that was a, I, I could imagine them seeing that kind of change on a fixed income. Okay. Mr. Brown, are we all set with that?
Yes.
Okay, maintenance road, uh, maintenance bond release, Fallon Estates?
Yeah, there's a, there's a document in the, uh, signature file there. The planning board voted to release the two-year performance bond, uh, in the amount of fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. This vote was taken on September the nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen. It's actually for Fallon Drive, Juniper Court, and Hemlock Court. So the town's contracted engineer has gone out, done an inspection, consulted with the town's road agent, and has, uh, recommended this action to the planning board, and planning board is recommending the, this release to the Board of Selectmen.
Gentlemen, do you have a motion?
Make a motion to release the Fallon, Juniper, and Hemlock road bonds. To, and change it to a road maintenance bond, two-year maintenance bond.
Motion by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunel. Um, to release the road maintenance bond and turn it to a perfor- uh, two-year maintenance.
Release it from a performance.
Performance.
And make it.
To a maintenance bond. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries five zero zero.
My motion could have been a little clear.
Uh, Route three A travel lanes. Mr. Brown?
Okay, um, I'm going to bring this to the board's attention. We have, um, a citizen that's, um, approached me, uh, this summer, and he's, uh, always been, Mr. Fisk, you, you can see him around town, he's riding his bicycle around town, uh, almost on a daily basis. And he brought it to my attention that he learned that, and, uh, the three A is going to be repaved. We thought that was going to be scheduled this summer. Ended up just being, uh, the shimmering overlay work in preparation of doing the actual overlay work next year. And he, he, he contacted the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, asked them if they could, when they restriped three A, if they could actually, um, decrease the width of the travel lane. Typical travel lanes are about twelve feet wide, so they would reduce it. Uh, it's not just ten, I mean, it could be ten and a half. There's some, um, measurements and methodology that the state uses, um, to determine how wide each road could, could be. And by reducing the, the width of the travel lane, you create some shoulder where it just provides a little bit more, um, travel space for people that are either pedestrians or, um, cycling. So I did, at first, I was, um, really kind of, wasn't really interested in, in having this discussion. But I agreed to meet with the state official, and we, we went around town. They showed me examples of different roads. And you know, we, this is a program that the, the state will just stick to their standard, um, striping procedures. But if a town asks to have, uh, the, the, the travel lanes shortened, they will consider it because they have a statewide pedestrian bicycle, uh, plan. And they have done this throughout the state in certain areas. And I guess it's actually worked out pretty well. First, people are kind of hesitant about it, um, because it is changed. But for the right roads, it can work. Three A is one of those roads where it could work, based on the conversations I've had. Um, but anyhow, what I'd like to have, we have an opportunity here, if, if we're going to do it, um, because the, you know, the state will be doing the, the contracts this, this winter, and, and the work will be lined up for the spring, that we have an opportunity to meet with state officials. I thought we could have maybe a couple selectmen, have some from New Hampshire D O T, have a police chief, fire chief, um, you know, maybe a couple, um, business owners in town. Just meet informally and, and discuss this and see if it's something that makes sense. It may not, you know, for, um, safety reasons and, um, you know, other reasons. But again, if you're open-minded, it may be something worth trying.
When, when Troy brought this to my attention, of course, those of us that live on three A, every time we see a bicyclist, we shudder.
Hmm.
Um, and especially with the truck traffic that comes out of the Santa Gravel north of town. Um, I certainly wouldn't want to make a decision without having, um, people that deal with it, uh, with the striping and the width and, because I don't, I know that I, that, uh, from the water discussions, from the laying of the pipe for the water, that they found out that three A in some places were not, is not even wide enough, as wide as they thought it was at the. So, uh, I suggested that we have a meeting. Um, I'll volunteer to, to sit in, and if there's any, uh, buddy on the board that would like to join me, um, I'd like to schedule a meeting with them to get the information. And, um, certainly bring it back because, uh, like I said, then, then we won't be making a decision in a vacuum, especially on three A. The other, the streets in town, that's different. That's, uh, you know, they don't have that traffic. They didn't, they weren't built two hundred years ago. So, um, uh, if, so, Troy, can you contact them and set up a meeting? And I'll share the date with any of you, and if you'd like to join us at the meeting, okay?
Just out of curiosity, though, has the chief, police chief weighed in on this whole thing?
No, that's why I, I thought that, you know, before we do anything.
Opinion. I, I would, yeah, yeah. I, I just, I confuse us to, I've seen him riding, and I saw why he doesn't ride down Albuquerque.
I was just going to say that.
Well, that's right.
I'll give him the same shot. I get it, there may be businesses that he goes through.
You know?
Yeah, the cyclists don't, you know, the bike path.
Professional cyclists don't go on the bike.
Yeah, but they, they ride on the side of Albuquerque. Albuquerque has a lot of straight paths. It's a lot, you know, it's, there's pl- there's room to move. You have to move.
See, it's important to me when, that the police chief weigh in, the fire chief, because of the width, the apparatus, and, um, and our, the road agents and the state. So, um, if it's okay, um, and we'll find out the date, and I'll share it with you, and if any of you would like to.
Okay. It's a, it's an interesting discussion. Um, there are, like I said, there are towns that, um, have, have actually done this, and there's like a half dozen of them, and it's, seems to work. It is, there's some benefits where it actually, in some cases, I guess, uh, because you get this feeling that you're kind of, you know, in this really narrow lane. It slows traffic down.
The south end of town, it seems like it's narrower down there, and I'm going wide to get around bikes that are there, and they're riding on the fog.
I know.
So I don't, if you bring the fogline even closer, or bring it out further.
That's a scary thing.
You're going to be crossing over the W L line to get around these guys.
You know when the last time they did a traffic study? On three A?
I don't know.
You don't know?
It wasn't long ago because I, I noticed coming over the line, they have the.
Yeah, there was some, when they put the bridge, I think a year ago, they did the bridge assessment again.
Today.
How much traffic was going that way to the bridge?
A lot.
Oh, I'm sure, I can, um, I'm sure N R P C has that data.
Do it in front of your house?
Do it in front of our houses, right, Deb? North of.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic there.
You see how many cars and trucks go by there?
There's a lot. I, I just.
I'm having them preferring Manchester over Hudson now because it's so much easier to get that way.
My neighbor that lives down on three A near, uh, Robinow was, he was visiting one day, and he's looking, he goes, oh, my god, I'll never complain about traffic again.
You know how hard it is to get a left out of your driveway, Brent?
Yeah, well, you should have seen it when I was fire chief trying to get out, even back then. I had the car at the end of the driveway, the lights are going, everything, and they're coming around that corner. I had to wait to get out. Of course, they locked the brakes up and all, like, that was a mess.
Just put a flashing yellow light up, hey?
Yeah, no offense. Okay, we will do that. We will, uh, set that up. I, I will share it and, um.
I'd like to be part of that.
Okay.
Perfect.
Do you want my opinion on that?
Certainly.
Are you sure?
We always.
Are we going to get it even if we don't?
Well, I just want to make sure that it's perfectly clear that there is no way I will ever vote to approve narrowing the travel lanes on three A.
Yeah.
To accommodate bicyclists. I will never do that. Because the day someone gets killed, my name won't be on it.
But I just want to get the details.
I don't need the details. It's not big enough.
I, I want to, uh, it, it isn't, but.
If they're repaid?
Then we'll have it in writing. We'll know it. Okay, Troy, so we'll set that up for soon? Okay, authorization to hire Scott Kavanaugh for cable operator. Troy?
Yeah, Scott, as I understand, actually was employed by the town as a cable operator, um, a few years back. Um, I think more than a few years back. Um, but anyhow, he, there was a email that was sent out, a little confusing. Londonderry, Litchfield, but, you know, it generated some interest. So, um, Scott has, um, come forward and would like to, um, be a cable operator. So I know that we just recently, uh, discussed that, you know, the Board of Selectmen will be approving hiring of, of, um, employees, so I just wanted to put this on the agenda.
Okay, is there a motion, gentlemen?
Make a motion to hire Scott Kavanaugh as a cable operator at twelve dollars an hour.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer.
Second.
Seconded by, your name? Sorry, I have to, Mr. Bork. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Next time we need help.
Five zero zero.
Funny because we love you.
I know. Okay, um, equalization, twenty seventeen equalization.
Probably could have put this under the consent agenda. But this is an annual, um, form that the board, um, has to sign. It starts off with you folks. And from here, once you sign it, we submit it to Avatar. They prepare the rest of the data, um, submit it to the state, um, so that they can come up with our equalization, um, number.
And that is in the folder? And we don't need a motion signed?
Just need to have it signed, yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, N H A A O membership?
It's the New Hampshire Association of Assessors, assessing. And this week is the, uh, the, uh, annual conference. They have their annual meeting at the conference where they elect, uh, different members to be president, vice president, and secretary. And in the past, Lauren Martin, the contracted assessor, has attended those meetings and voted on behalf of the town of Litchfield. She's just asked, um, for permission to do that.
Members of the board? I'll entertain a motion to authorize, if you so do, find that suitable.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Brunel to authorize Lauren Martin from Avatar to cast ballots on behalf of the town of Litchfield. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bork. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries five zero zero. Uh, meeting scheduled December. Mr. Brown?
Okay, so in the month of December, we, our fourth, because we meet on the second and fourth Monday of the month, Christmas is the fourth Monday of the month. So just seeing if everyone would be available to meet, um, on the eighteenth, which will be the week prior.
Will we not have to have a meeting before the, end of the year? So why not just move it to, like, say, Friday or Thursday and do it then?
Yeah.
It'll close the month up.
Yeah, because we do have to approve the.
Right. It's usually a short meeting. It's, it's also deal with all the encumbrances that we haven't done already in the last.
Yep. I'm okay with that if anyone.
Because if we meet on the eighteenth, we'll have to meet again at some point.
Right.
Right, so why don't we just schedule?
So.
What does the eighteen?
January one.
Uh, what days are good for you?
There's a but.
Twenty-seventh, Wednesday, is that good?
Can be.
Yeah, that could go too.
Mr. Schaefer?
You can get the recorder.
Yeah, right now, I mean, I.
Is the twenty-seventh okay?
Okay.
Deborah, you all set with?
She, she'll have to give me the recorder, but, um.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right, how about if we plan the twenty-seventh?
Okay.
Same time or earlier or?
Uh, I can do any time you want.
Are you working with Steve?
Suggestions?
Six is fine. You want to keep it at six?
I can do five thirty if you want.
Okay.
How about five thirty?
Sure. Sure.
Okay. We'll do that. Now, item eight. Mr. Brown?
I think we're supposed, we have to announce, right?
O- okay, that's all we're doing, okay.
Yeah, it's just a, an actual vote. Vote on approval, we already decided.
Okay. All right, the Board of Selectmen completed the town administrator's review on October twenty-third, twenty seventeen. I'm gonna ask for a motion to ratify the review. And I would suggest that the- Wording be I move to grant the town administrator a three percent marriage wage increase effective July first, twenty seventeen, in accordance with the personnel policy and his employment agreement. Is anyone okay with that motion to make it?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Brunel.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries, five zero zero.
We're official.
The paper that needs to be signed is under your name tag there.
What paper? What was that?
Payroll change form.
You don't need to sign that.
Oh.
What's that?
Paper, what? What's he talking about?
All right. Next item is other business, we have no other. Oh, we, administrative report, sorry. Mr. Brown?
TA report?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I just have one item, uh, just talking with, um, some of the employees that, um, about the annual Christmas party. And a suggestion was made that we should, um, look into seeing if we could close the town office. Usually we'll come in here and, you know, people are kind of coming in and out of the building and, um, it'd be nice to build a, close the office and actually go to a local restaurant and have our, um, uh, Christmas party. So, wanted to run it past the board, um, see if you would find that acceptable or not.
What day are you thinking?
Well, we haven't picked it yet, um, it probably would be a Tuesday.
I don't think it matters when it is.
And, you know, we would, we would pick that date and-
So, closing early and having a party isn't enough? Now we have to close the whole day so you can go somewhere else?
Well, we'd leave, we'd be leaving to a, go to a different-
Close at noon?
Go to a restaurant, close at noon, or close at one.
So, it'd be the same closing situation.
With that being said, would it be your own time that they'd be using the day?
Well, seeing this Christmas party, usually, um, the spirit of the, of the holiday, employer would, something would, you know, something he would give the employees.
Remind me when the town hall is closed for the holiday, just the twenty-fifth?
Well, the twenty, yeah, it would be closed on the twenty-fifth.
We were back open on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
My only concern is that when you have it here, at least if there are members of the public that, you know, urgently need something, there's someone here to accommodate them. And the problem is by going off-site, um, not everybody can do that. Like you're firing your police, they can't do that where they could stop in onsite. So, personally, in the interest of fairness for everybody, if they wanted to do that, I'd, I'd suggest they do it late afternoon, early evening. But I'd pr- preferably, I would prefer, because of the people that can't do that, I'd prefer to just maintain the celebration in-house and still be able to accommodate the needs of residents.
Is there, is there a date, was that already asked? Is there a date picked for this already?
Uh, we have not selected one, but we were thinking, let's see here. The nineteenth, Tuesday the nineteenth was, um, a possible date that we're thinking about. We usually have it on Tuesday, um, because, you know, the-
Chair and myself.
Yeah, uh, treasurer and stuff are here, Deb's here. And that date is, should be pretty quiet that, because we're in between, you know, the, obviously at the start of the month, you're busy with taxes, they're due December first. So, you're gonna be busy at the start of the month with car registrations and taxes. And of course, at the end of the month, you're gonna be busy again with car registrations and taxes.
I mean, I hate to sound like a Scrooge, but I, you know what I mean, I, I just, it, it's, and, and, it's an anathema to me that we just shut down when not everybody can enjoy it. I want everybody to be able to enjoy it, and yet, I want the best of both worlds, that we're able to accommodate our people, so, our citizens. So, I'd prefer personally to keep it in-house. Members of the board?
I'm with you, I'll side with you on that. I mean, I get it's the holiday season, but, you know, at some point we need to draw a line. We keep doing this, it's gonna be ridiculous, you know?
I, I, it could go either way. I, I like the fact, you, you know, the, there are other town employees who could not leave their duties. They could come here, so that's one of the reasons why I thought it was always beneficial having it here, that it was opened up to everybody.
And that was the reason, I think, when it first started years ago.
Well, it started as a small office party, and it, I know it's grown a little bit, which is fine, and, you know, if they really, I guess I can go either way.
I know when I used to have Christmas parties that were at a restaurant, it was on a Saturday night. And when it changed from that, it changed to, we closed at noon, we have the party there. Two, two and a half hours later, everybody gets out of there as quick as possible because it's a short day.
Kurt?
Yeah, I, I could go either way. I mean, I, I gotta agree though that, you know, we do have people in the building that can't leave their post, especially the police officers and stuff, so, we do have it here, they can, uh, come in and have their lunch break with us or whatever they're gonna do, and-
Okay, I think the consensus is to maintain in-house. Troy?
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, selectmen reports, Mr. Brunel?
So, last week was the budget committee meeting. Obviously, I wasn't able to attend due to a moral service I had to go to. I just started watching the, uh, the recording, so I don't have a whole lot. It was focused on the school for the most part. Budget committees, the last two meetings have been focused on the school, so no real changes in the town. You sent them over an email regarding the health insurance changes, so that should address the remaining fifteen thousand and some odd dollars to meet the cap. So, I think we're probably in that point in good shape, hopefully.
Yeah.
But it's been, you know, it's been a good process so far. And I don't think there's a meeting this week. I gotta check the calendar again.
I didn't see it on the calendar, and I was, so, so you, they've met at school twice.
Correct.
And then, like, with the town, they met twice and they took a break.
And I don't think they're meeting until after the holiday.
Okay.
But I have to, I'll check with, I gotta check with the chair.
November twenty-third is their next meeting, according to the ma- uh, the website.
Well, they're gonna have a lot of turkey.
It could be just the repair, you know?
I think that's the reoccurring meeting that would happen normally.
Yeah, because that's Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah, Derek.
Yeah, that's why I said, I don't, I don't, it's definitely gonna be. So, it's good there.
It sucks to be them not to meet on Thanksgiving.
Planning board met last week, um, as everybody knows, um, Tom is no longer with us. So, the planning board acted on, there was a sign, application that came in, they had no action because there was nobody to present. There was a lot line adjustment for the trailer park down off of Page Road. That got approved, and then the other one was for an expansion to Optum.
Optum.
Solutions. They're gonna, um, tear down the home that's on the property, and they're gonna build a, I don't wanna call it a shed, but, storage building, I guess you'd call it.
The next one that's currently there?
Yes, in front of it, actually. So, um, that one was not finalized, so they have to come back. I believe it was December seventeenth that they were coming back for that. And as you all know, I cannot do any more meetings for them. So, um, their next meeting is next Tuesday, and that is the master plan meeting. So, the second meeting of the months are always the master plan.
I, I have that one covered.
And so do you know, I wanna thank my compatriots here, what, we're, um, as you know, Kurt's going to take November, I'm going to do December, and Kevin is gonna do January.
And I informed them of that as well, so-
Okay, great.
At the next meeting, they are going to be nominating a new chair. Mike Croto filled in, he's the vice chair right now, he filled in at that meeting. And I have no idea who they're gonna name or what they're gonna do, but that'll happen at the next meeting.
And we, and respond to your request to update the, the planning board stuff?
Yes.
I've asked, I've still received nothing.
For the names?
I, I'll get the information, Joe. You sent something to Joan, right?
I did.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I, you know, it's-
And she may not, so I, I'll get it.
Yeah, I just didn't know who, I, I, I don't-
It's the time of the year, we gotta update the town report stuff anyhow, so it's, it's-
It's just I don't keep track of who's on what board and all that, unless someone sends me an update, I won't even think about it.
Yeah, one of, one of the members asked if, um, the website could be updated to the current members and when their terms expire. Because apparently my term expired in twenty fifteen, or sixteen, or something like that.
Your term?
That was what they said, I don't know.
Yeah, but you're a rep of the, there's not, you're not on a term, but-
Yeah. I'm telling you, I don't know. I relayed what I got given.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I don't see work, so it's-
I have nothing other than the planning board issue. Uh, oh, and also, um, the New Hampshire Municipal Association is hosting their annual conference Wednesday and Thursday of this week at the Radisson in Manchester. And if any of you are free during the day, it's, uh, certainly worthwhile, um, conference to go to. They have something for everybody, selectmen, all municipal employees and elected officials, um, are, you know, are eligible to attend, and they have seminars and classes, uh, on everything that you can think of, so. If anyone's interested, I'll forward the, um, informa- or Troy, you have it too, right? The agenda and the lineup of the classes and meetings and stuff, so. Mr. Bork?
So, I'm good. Litchfield Rec, we, uh, we haven't met since the last time we had a selectman's meeting, but we do have a comedy night coming up, uh, November twenty-fifth. Doors open at six o'clock, it's twenty dollars a person, from six to eight, um, Jason Brennan and Pizza Leader's is spinning vinyl. Eight o'clock, we have three comedians going on, uh, three, three different guys. And after the comedians are done, we're gonna do karaoke.
Oh.
So, uh, and I've promised that I will do a song.
Do you realize what happens, after, after comedy, most people probably can't talk?
That's why it'd be another good show.
People, people will have the liquid courage going on, and, you know, they'll get up there. But anyway, uh, so, that, and that, the, the benefit is the Justin Bissett Baseball Complex, um, out on Jeff Lane. Uh, we, we're in the home stretch right now, um, baseball field got hydro-seated last week. The well company's there today, they were drilling a well, uh, for irrigation. Um, we've got the concrete company, they set up their forums for the, um, Snack Shack. And we hope to get the Snack Shack built in the next month or so, and, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll be doing something with the ball field next year.
Great.
So, that's what's going on.
Nice, excellent. Okay, anybody else? Okay, there is no items removed from consent, any other business? Okay, our next regular meeting is Monday, November twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, at six P M. And, uh, we will now be going into back-to-back non-public sessions under RSA ninety-one A colon three two A for both of them, hiring and compensation. So, we will adjourn the regular meeting and go into non-public, and we will only come out of non-public. I'm sorry, we did, we don't adjourn the regular meeting, we'll be going into non-public. We'll only be coming out of non-public to adjourn the regular meeting. So, I will, uh, so, uh, thank you for watching, and, uh, have a great Thanksgiving, everyone. And I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session.
So made.
Moved by Mr. Brunel, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, Mr. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bork and Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, five zero zero, and a roll call. We are now in non-public session at six-